And I will start the meeting with the land acknowledgement. I should say, I'm Eli Nathans. I'm a member of the Washtenaw County Democratic Party Programs Committee. Washtenaw County occupies the ancestral and traditional lands of the Anishinaabe of the Three Fires Confederacy, the Ottawa, Ojibwa, and Potawatomi. The Washtenaw County Democratic Party recognizes historic indigenous communities in Michigan, and those who were forcibly removed from their lands. Washtenaw County occupies land ceded in the 1807 Treaty of Detroit. We acknowledge indigenous history and experiences. Welcome to this second panel of the Washtenaw County Democratic Party with Ann Arbor School Board trustee candidates. The panel is being recorded, and the video recording will be placed on the Washtenaw County Democratic Party website for viewers to see between now and the election in November. I should explain that we're holding the second panel because the first panel took place on a Saturday, and Alex Wood, one of the panelists, I hope, I would expect one other to show up, observes the Sabbath, and the Saturday therefore was not a day she could make. I'm very glad that she agreed to join us for this second run of the panel. I think I'm now going to turn this over to Deb Mexicott, who will be the moderator for this evening's discussion. Deb was a longtime member of the Ann Arbor School Board, former member, and was also chair for a long period of the school board, so she knows the subject quite well. Deb, please take charge.
Thank you, and I may repeat a couple of the things that Eli said because I have a fairly boilerplate statement to make at the beginning, just to lay out the format for everyone. And as Eli said, we may be expecting another candidate who may be joining us. And so just to be alert to that in case that happens, it's something that we would expect. But if it is just our current candidate, Alex Wood, I am so happy to have this conversation with you as well. So hello, everyone, and I would also like to welcome you to the second Ann Arbor Public Schools Board of Education Candidate Panel hosted by the Washtenaw County Democratic Party. As Eli said, I'm Deb Mexicott, and I'll be moderating tonight's conversation. And I'm really happy to be here. Anytime there are citizens from Ann Arbor that want to step up to public service, I just, I'm so pleased to be able to have a conversation with them. So with us tonight is Alex Wood. Welcome. And as was said, we're holding the Second Candidates Forum so that those that could not attend our first candidate forum on Saturday would have an opportunity to answer questions that the community was interested in and be able to put their views out there for consideration. So we, just a little bit about format. We'll be asking most of the same questions in the same order as those from the first candidates panel. We will also be able to take live questions from the audience. If you'd like to ask a question, please raise your hand or type it in the Q and A box. We likely will not be able to ask all submitted questions, so I encourage you to follow up with the candidates and otherwise inform yourselves further through other campaign events and publications. So the format for this event would be as follows. If indeed our second candidate shows up, I will alternate who starts and who ends a question because I know from personal experience that always going first or always going last is just no fun. And you will have two minutes for your opening statement, and I'll have an opening statement that you're familiar with, that I'd sent to you to just keep under two minutes. And then after that, you'll have about 90 seconds for each question. When you hit the 20-second mark in any case, you will see this yellow card. When you hit the end of your time, you will see this red card. So when you see the yellow card, it just tells you to sort of wrap up your question, and we'll move on to the next. So I expect this forum to run about 30, 35 minutes, perhaps less, and there will be no closing statements. You'll just receive my heartfelt thanks. So there are a number of moderator questions that were supplied to us prior to the panel. And as I said, we will also be asking questions that were either sent to us earlier by email or that may come in live from this audience or perhaps from the previous panel. So without any further introduction from me, I will ask you, Alex, to respond to the following opening statement. Could you please tell us your name, a bit about yourself, and while you're running for a trustee position on the Ann Arbor Board of Education?
Hi, my name is Alex Wood. My pronouns are she and her. I am a light-skinned Hispanic woman. I have long dark hair. I'm wearing a tie-dye shirt in trans colors, light pink, light blue, and it says in dark letters, "Trans Rights Are Human Rights." I, a little bit about my platform. My campaign is explicitly pro masks, pro vaccines, anti-racist, queer and trans-affirming, and disability justice-focused. These are not buzzwords for me. These are real elements that affect my life, the lives of the people that I care about and value. And it's important to me that those voices are centered in everything I do. I am a townie. I grew up here. I went to the Ann Arbor Public Schools myself. My kids are now in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. My daughter started kindergarten last year. We chose the virtual school. All of my kids have some form of immune compromise, and so we chose the virtual school for her. It was the only safe option for our family. I know that there are other families who have the same restrictions, but not everyone has the privilege that I had to choose to stay home and attend school virtually. I want to recognize that. Why am I running? I don't see people having the conversations on the board currently about the things that affect my family, affect my life, affect the lives of the people that I really care about. I see a lot of surface conversations sort of alluding to, oh, thanks.
Thank you. And Eli, if you could leave the card up just a little longer each time, that would be helpful. Thank you so much. And I see that we're joined by Barry Schumer. Am I pronouncing that correctly? I think you're muted, Barry.
Am I unmuted now?
You are indeed.
Very good.
Welcome. So as you can see, we have started with our opening statements. What I'd like to do is offer you the two-minute opening statement, and I'll give you the prompt, and then I will go quickly over the ground rules for today's format again so you know exactly what we're doing as well, all right?
No problem.
Great. So if you would like to tell us your name, a bit about yourself, and while you're running for a trustee position on the Board of Education in Ann Arbor, and please, this will be two minutes. At 20 seconds, you'll see a yellow card from Mr. Nathans, and that will tell you to wrap up, and when you see a red card, that will be the end of your time. So please.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Barry Schumer. I'm running for the Ann Arbor School Board because I love the city of Ann Arbor, and I want to give back to the city of Ann Arbor. I'm semi-retired. I have the time to do this. I've loved working with students, parents, and teachers over my 23-year career working in the public schools. The first eight years at the Monroe Intermediate School District, the last 15 years in the Dearborn Public Schools. You know, the other issue is, for me, when you look at education, it is clearly the key to unlocking the golden door of freedom for our kids. In today's world, you must be educated. You must have a skill you're trained on to make it as an independent adult in the world. If I look at the ultimate responsibility of the school system, it's to create adults who are literate in reading, math, and science, and who can critically think for themselves in today's significantly confusing and complicated world, enabling these kids to become a part of our great American civilization. So again, my experience over the years, I believe, has prepared me for working on a school board in a community such as Ann Arbor. My wife and I love it here. Obviously, as a clinical social worker, my area of expertise is mental health. I counsel many students with emotional and behavioral problems, general education, as well as special education students who have an educational disability. I also taught 23 years at three universities in the School of Social Work, Wayne State, University of Michigan, Ann Arbor, and Eastern, where I just left three years ago. Some of the courses I taught had to do with the state laws for social workers in certifying children with educational disabilities. So again, I want to get back to the city. I want to do whatever I can to make this next year or two for Ann Arbor students the best of their educational career, and I want parents and teachers to feel good about it. I want teachers to feel great about their careers.
And thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. So just again briefly, we will move on to the questions. I will alternate the order in which I ask you the questions. So sometimes you'll go first, Mr. Schumer, and sometimes you'll go first, Ms. Wood. And if you have any questions as we move along, please, or need a clarification. These questions have come from both the moderator questions you were sent, some from, may come from the live audience, and some from the emails that we've received prior to this forum. The other piece is what you recognize, the yellow card at 20 seconds, and then the red card when you need to finish up. And each of the questions now, you'll have 90 seconds in which to give us your answer. So, all right, I think I've covered most of it, and if I haven't, I'll catch up as we move along. So I'm again going to start with Alex Wood and ask, and then I will alternate from here. What are the main strengths of and challenges for the Ann Arbor Public School District?
Um, I think one of the strengths that I saw myself when I was a student and that I still see as a parent are the teachers and the way that they really care for our students. I think with enough teachers who are really invested in the outcomes of our kids, we can work together and really fix any of the problems that we do have. So I think that's a really important strength for us to have. I do think the place where we are still struggling is moving beyond surface diversity efforts into true equity, inclusion, and justice for our students. I know that marginalized kids continue to be left behind. And that's not something I've seen progress on. I don't, I don't see much between what I saw as a student and what I've seen working with families the last 25 years and now my own kids being in the school. I really, I really don't see improvement in any of those places, real, actual improvement, not just a shift in how we pretend that we have changed. And I'd like to see someone start digging in to do the work of improving that in our schools.
Thank you. Barry Schumer?
Yes, you know, I tell you, this is a great community. Ann Arbor is a great community that cares very much about children and its students. One of my big concerns is what children are going through over the last two and a half years with the COVID problem. I think they're very confused about the messages they're getting. They're confused about messages from teachers in schools, from parents, from social media. And I'm very concerned about the mental health of students today, obviously being a clinical social worker, and I want to do everything we can to strengthen that and make sure kids and families are getting the support they need. I'm also very concerned about teachers and their careers and how they feel about the next several years. We have obviously amazing teachers in Ann Arbor, and I want to make sure they feel the freedom to teach the way they've been taught professionally. I want to make sure they feel good about their career prospects and financial prospects. I want to make sure their hands are not tied in teaching, in the art form of teaching. And I want to make sure they are free from the political forces and political stresses that they may feel from a school board, from administrators, or from society in general. Obviously, our teachers are our heroes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The next question, we will begin again with you, Barry Schumer. The last two years of the pandemic, this is a good segue, have been a challenge for everyone, including the stakeholders in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. As we look into the future, what important lessons have we learned from the district's pandemic response?
Well, I think the lesson we've learned is be very careful with children's mental health. I think there were some mistakes made, and they were innocent enough, whether it be superintendent or school board or other administrators, because this was such a unique kind of problem in society. But obviously, it looks like pulling kids out of school, isolating them on computers at home, adding that kind of stress to parents and teachers actually, did not work as well as we hoped to. So I hope we learn from that, that any other future pandemic should not automatically pull kids out of school for a year to two. I think that otherwise, we need to look at the possibility of opening up the Ann Arbor school system. Brown and black children in districts just outside of Ann Arbor, why should they need to continue to suffer in poor schools? I hope that someday we look toward an open school system in Ann Arbor to include these kids that struggle in poor schools. I'm also, the lesson of the non-proficiency in math and reading, even in Ann Arbor, which is a great school system, much above most school systems in Michigan, we have a 30% non-proficiency rate in reading and close to a 50% non-proficiency rate in math. I'm very concerned about that, and it was just made worse by the pandemic. So we have a lot of catching up to do with students.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alex Wood?
Um, gosh, I had hoped that what we learned the last two years was that caving to the whims of people shouting the loudest or spending the most money is not what's best for our kids, especially our most vulnerable and marginalized families. And until this summer, I really, I thought that's kind of where we were. We did a great job the last couple of years keeping our children healthy and safe. I, I thought we were moving in the right direction. I'm a little concerned about how things are going to go in the coming year with the way we sort of loosened our protections to keep our kids and our staff healthy and safe. And so I'm worried about what's going to happen next year, especially considering that the current pandemic is ongoing and there are emerging pandemics. It's unclear what might happen when the schools reopen with monkey pox, so I'm a little worried about that. I hope that we can kind of return to that idea that universal masking especially, and prioritizing protecting the health and safety of everyone is a priority for us. I believe that, I know Barry is very concerned about mental health, and I think that that's...
You can finish your sentence.
Yeah, you can always finish.
I was going to say, I think one of the things that we've learned over the last couple of years is that if we don't protect children's physical health, we can't protect their mental health either. It's scary to not know if you're going to get sick at school or if you're going to bring something home to your family and make them sick.
Thank you. All right. So our next two questions are from amongst those that we received from the public prior to our previous candidates panel. And I'm going to start with you, Alex Wood. Please state any past or current affiliation with the A2R2 Reasonable Return Group.
I'm going to be honest, I did not know who they were until I decided to run. I had to get filled in on all of that. My family's medical needs were such that we really had been hunkered down the last couple of years, and so I wasn't paying attention. I think I've kind of caught up with what was happening. I don't think anything about what they did was reasonable. If that gives you an idea of where I stand on that, I think personally, if I was going to raise that much money to help the schools, I wouldn't have used it to sue anyone. I would have used it to make sure that we could return safely. I would have helped pay for maybe HEPA filters in the classrooms or masks for kids. I think if I wanted to be reasonable about something, I would have chosen to spend my money a different way to help instead of just forcing people to do my bidding.
Thank you. Barry Schumer?
Yeah, I had contact with one person from this group for about 15 minutes before I attended one of the board meetings in person last fall. I've had no other contact with anybody with the group. I don't really know that much about the group other than what I've read and seen about their protests with the school board and things centered around the pandemic and COVID. So other than the one contact I had with one of the members for 15 minutes, I've had no involvement.
Thank you. So the next question, and we will start with you again, Barry. The APS Before-School and After-School Care Program has long been an essential service for families. Are you committed to rebuilding the before and after care program? And what do you see as the key challenges for restoring these services? And what proposals do you have for getting them up and running as soon as possible?
Well, I would strongly support those programs, and obviously, the key to doing that is money. It is the key for any other great program or great idea in the school system. My understanding is that 85% of the $300 million school budget in Ann Arbor goes to pay teacher salaries, medical costs, and retirement along with staff. So there's not a lot of discretionary money for different programs, but clearly, parents need that before school and after school. We're on work schedules. Children get extra support at school, especially poor kids, minority students. So I would try to work with the board and the superintendent in any way that we could use that 15% of discretionary funds outside of teacher salary, medical, and retirement as a priority. I would try to use that money because to me, it should be a top priority.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alex Wood?
Um, yeah, I don't disagree with Barry. I mean, I understand why we stopped. I don't necessarily disagree with why that choice was made in the moment, but I think it's time to look at bringing it back. I do know that money is an issue. My mom actually worked in one of those programs for a while, kind of recently. And it wasn't enough money for her to live on, I can tell you. I think if we want to staff a program like that, we have to pay a living wage. And that's, that's a, that's a big issue. I do think having those programs reinstated is an equity issue. Not everyone can just be home at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock, and kids have to go somewhere, and I think that's part of our duty to be in community with others, is to make sure that our kids have a safe place to go, someone to help them with their homework, give them a snack. And, and the fact that we used to provide that was good. So, so yes, I would like to see that reinstated safely and funded appropriately.
Thank you. The next question is one that came from our live audience at our previous candidate panel. Through the pandemic, APS has been a one-to-one district, meaning there are personal computing devices for every student. However, there's been very little discussion, especially at the elementary level, of how much learning is taking place on the devices while in the classroom. Can the candidates discuss how much learning they think is appropriate to be on devices during elementary school and their level of willingness to have a study and public discussion about what is actually happening in the classroom on devices? And I will start with Alex Wood.
This is, this is a tough one for me. My daughter did the virtual school, so everything we did was on the computer at the elementary level. I'm not going to lie, doing kindergarten online was rough on both of us, but, but it was the right choice for us. I think, I think the idea that screens are all bad is outdated, and then, you know, newer data about how kids learn doesn't really reflect that screens are all bad. And, and we live in a digital world now, so they, it is appropriate for them to learn how to use them, for there to be some learning on the computers. I do, I do think that especially at the elementary level, more play-based learning is more appropriate for them. But I'm not anti-computer. In terms of running a study, I think we should look at it, but I really, I want to make sure that we're doing it in a way that isn't... Like, teachers have enough to do, right? Like, I'm not dumping something else in their lap, right, especially right now. So if there's a way for us to look at those outcomes without adding more work to our already overworked and underpaid teachers, yes. Otherwise, let's rethink how we look at that.
Thank you. Barry Schumer?
You know, I agree with Alex that we have to be very careful not to overload our teachers. We do not want to give them more to do. They already have too much to do. My feeling about the computer learning in class for elementary is that it should probably not be more than 10% to 20% of their education, but I will leave that to the experts in that area, and that's the elementary school teachers. If there's a study that's needed and we can afford it, then I guess we need to look at how, what percentage of the day they're using that computer, and can we measure the effectiveness of that computer time for elementary-age students? I believe the older you get, middle school and high school, that percentage could go up. I could see that going up to 20% to 40% for older students, but I believe elementary students need more hands-on, more direct interaction with the teacher. But again, don't give our teachers more to do, and let's leave it to the experts. Let them guide us in this important area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So this will be one of the moderator questions. Just prior to the pandemic, Ann Arbor passed a major bond allowing for ongoing capital investment in the district. What are your thoughts on the bond's impact to date? And how will it address the district's needs and priorities moving forward? And we'll start with Barry Schumer.
Well, from what I understand, and I went to the open house of the new intermediate school district and the high school. I believe that money, some or quite a bit of it, went to that project. It's a beautiful building that's going to serve Ann Arbor students and parents for years to come. Obviously, anytime we need that kind of extra funding, we've got to go back to the taxpayers and the parents and ask them for that, and they were able to give us this money for that. I'm sure it was used for other things as well, but obviously, that building was a major expense to the Ann Arbor School District. And I just, I can't imagine how wonderful that's going to be over the next 20, 30, 40 years for special education students and other high school students in the Ann Arbor area.
Thank you. Alex Wood?
Um, so I watched, there was a YouTube video of the, like, sort of bond update. I think, let me look at my, May 27 of last year. It was the most recent one I could, could find. And like, the plan looks solid. It seems like they're doing good work. I struggle to find, like, real details. I think that's a big problem in our schools right now, is that, like, there's not a lot of transparency. Like, it wasn't, like, the broad strokes are there, but like, I couldn't find, like, real details about what exactly they did. For me, I'm like, I'm probably going to harp on this for every question. I'm worried about, like, safety, pandemic safety, health and safety. So they talked about upgrading the HVAC units, and they talked about improving ventilation, but like, what does that mean? Like, did they put in HEPA filters? Like, why wasn't there filters in each classroom during the pandemic so we could meet more safely and preserve impersonal... filters in each classroom during the pandemic, so we could meet more safely and preserve in-person learning? There was no discussion of like, a shifting of priorities as the pandemic happened. There was not... I guess, I'm... It seems like the plan was solid, but I'd like to see more transparency in terms of what exactly they were doing, how did they decide, and why didn't they shift a little bit when it was clear we needed to maybe put money somewhere else that was more important in the moment the last two years?
Thank you. We have come to the last question for today's candidate forum, and this does mirror the forum and panel that we held previously, and so you all get the same opportunity to answer the same questions. And so I'm going to start with you, Alex. What are your thoughts on the disparity in population among the three comprehensive high schools, and any impact the in-district transfer or school-of-choice programs might have in these disparities? What, if anything, should the board instruct the district to do?
This has been a problem since I went to school, right? Like, I I remember, Skyline didn't exist yet, but the district still currently, and was not before, drawn in an equitable fashion, and so sort of the highest and lowest-income neighborhoods all dumped into Huron, and then everybody in the middle ended up at Pioneer. And I don't think the way that Skyline was drawn in made that better necessarily. I would like to see that looked at in terms of how do we do that in a more equitable fashion? And in terms of school of choice, I do, that makes a big difference. We've seen it with some of the magnet schools, the way that that can completely shift the demographics of a school, and and I'd like to see more... I'd like to see us looking closer to ensure that those schools get distributed in a more equitable fashion. Like, I don't I don't think we're doing a good job right now.
Thank you. And with the last word tonight, Barry Schumer?
Okay, so when you asked the question regarding disparity in the three schools, I'm assuming you are meaning minority status of our students and/or socioeconomic status of our students. Is that correct?
I believe that you could certainly address those in your answer if you'd like, but this was about population size primarily.
Right, right. I would say it's a really difficult area. I am not in favor of social engineering ideas coming from our school board to put together ideal populations of students and shifting and moving people around, no matter where they live in the city. I think that's a very cautious kind of area to be in. I'm not sure what we can do to sort of even that out, but I certainly believe I'm going to do some research into it and look into it. That is not an easy problem to solve. That I can guarantee you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, well, that's the end of our questions for this evening. I want to thank our panelists for coming and speaking with us today, Alex Wood and Barry Schumer, for giving us their time and thoughts on a wide range of challenges and opportunities that they may be addressing if they are elected to be a trustee serving in the Ann Arbor Board of Education. A recording of this panel will be available shortly. You just check out the Wasna County Democratic Party's website, and they should have posting information there. I want to thank you all for watching this evening, and have a great rest of your night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. And thank you to the panelists.